Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 28th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Mobile County Commission. Call the meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the invocation this morning to be given by Pastor Tony Legear from the Mobile Police Department. At conclusion, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Good morning, Mrs. Ludgood. Nice to meet you, ma'am. Mrs. Hudson, Mr. Doitt, nice to meet you. I am the new chaplain of Mobile Police Department. I'm the happiest guy in the room. I've been here seven months. This is my first time here with the cool kid. So thanks for the invitation. So let's pray together on this great day. Our Father, we give thanks to you for the gift of your son, Jesus. We thank you for the smile in our heart, the opportunity to serve and to better our community. Our prayer initially, oh Lord, is for these who lead us, these who stand at the gates of the city and prayerfully deliberate what is best for your people. So we welcome you here, Holy Spirit. May your spirit of peace govern our time together here today. In Christ's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
People who tend to come over from the city to the county commission meetings, they seem to be pretty happy about being able to be here with us. Thank you, chaplain, for being here. All right, this morning, we have a couple of recognitions and presentations. We have our retirees, and we also have, we're going to do a resolution on Operation Green Light. And if I'll go ahead and I think Commissioner Ludgood's going to do the Operation Green Light. And then when we come back, I'll do, I'll explain every, to everyone where you can pick up your green porch lights for the observation of Operation Green Light. And then also, we have some presentations for some veterans this morning. So then we'll do our retirees after that.
A resolution of the Mobile County Commission supporting Operation Green Light for veterans in Mobile County. Whereas the residents of Mobile County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces are vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, Mobile County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, and civil service are functioning as county veteran services officers in 25, 29 states to help fellow former service member access more than $52 billion in federal health disability and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the future. Studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high stress, kind of like me this morning, levels during the transition from military to civilian life. Active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, the Mobile County Commission honors the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes that specific recognition should be granted. And now therefore, let it be resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Mobile County declares from November 4th through Veterans Day, November 11, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service home. Furthermore, in observance of Operation Green Light, Mobile County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through November 11, 2024. And this is done by, signed by all three commissioners and our county administrator.
Well, good morning. Two of the highest honors that are bestowed in our community every year by the Mobile Bay Veterans Commission is the Veteran of the Year and the Patriot of the Year. And we're going to do one of these one at the time, gentlemen. We'll have you come up one at the time. But I think Colonel Steve Carey, who is the president of the Veterans Association here locally, Mobile Bay Veterans Commission, I think it'd be appropriate if you joined us up here as well as we present these. First, we're going to have our Mobile Bay Area Veteran of the Year for 2024, Thomas Claxton. And this is, this is such an honor to have both of these gentlemen here today because, you know, this is an opportunity every year for us, for us as a community, to come together to show our admiration and respect for people who have dedicated their lives, their service to our country, to our community, to our citizens, and to let them know how much we appreciate them and what they're, what they've been through in their careers and in their service to our country, what, you know, how that's impacted not only our lives, but our children's lives and the future of our country. And so we're just so happy to have you here today to recognize you. And let me read this resolution in your honor. It's, whereas the greatest acknowledgement of our freedom is to honor our armed forces veterans who have sacrificed and in many instances paid the ultimate price for our freedom. The Mobile County Commission recognizes and respects Thomas, Tom G. Claxton for being selected the Mobile Bay Area Veteran of the Year for 2024. And whereas from June 1956 to August 1962, he served in the Marine Corps, attaining the rank of Sergeant. Since he left the Marine Corps, Tom continued to serve his country and community in various capacities. Among these is serving in the P.L. Wilson Detachment of the Marine Corps League. He is currently serving his fourth term as the detachment's commandant, commandant. Commandant, I'm sorry. Tom has brought more than 190 new members into the P.L. Wilson Detachment. And whereas Tom was chosen as Ed Seafood Veteran of the Year for 2023 and received a quilt of valor from that organization, he has created and promoted a news from the front program which relays information about local soldiers and Marines from the front lines to the headlines. Tom is the founder of the Veterans Helping Veterans Car Show, one of the largest Jeep and car shows on the Gulf Coast. And whereas for Tom Claxton's many years of dedicated service to the Marine Corps League, he has been awarded six distinguished service awards, two national recruiter awards, bronze, two national recruiter awards, silver, two community service awards, and four Recruiter of the Year awards. Wow. He was also selected as the detachment's 2009 Marine of the Year. And for his service to the veterans of Alabama, Governor Bob Riley appointed Tom as an honorary Colonel for the state of Alabama. And whereas Tom is the co-founder and co-host of the Scuttlebutt Network radio program, the one-hour radio program and its companion website cover the Gulf Coast and the nation on the issues important to the veterans community. And now therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission proudly joins the Mobile Bay Veterans Commission in saluting Thomas, Tom G. Claxton for being recognized as the Mobile Bay Area Veteran of the Year for 2024. We acknowledge your contributions, dedication, and commitment to the cause of our freedom. Thank you for your service, Tom Claxton. Let's give him a round of applause. Signed by all three commissioners. Would you like to say?
After reading all that, I'm tired. I didn't realize I'd done all that. But I am so proud and just so blessed to be even considered, much less win the award. God bless you. Thank you, and God bless our veterans.
God bless America. Thank you.
George told me when we were coming across Delaware, he knew I was going to be trouble. Thank you so much. God bless.
Steve, Colonel Carey, you want to stay up here with? And next, we have a resolution for the Mobile Bay Area Patriot of the Year for 2024, Sergeant Major Retired Brian B. Bataglia. Welcome. We're honored to have you here today. Your resolution reads, whereas the Mobile County Commission recognizes and respects Sergeant Major Brian B. Bataglia for being selected the Mobile Bay Area Patriot of the Year for 2024. And whereas Sergeant Major Bataglia served 37 years at the highest level of the United States Marine Corps and the Department of Defense, he was the second senior enlisted advisor to the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. Bataglia also served as the most senior ranking non-commissioned officer of the United States Armed Forces and principal military advisor to the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, Generals Martin Dempsey and General Joseph Dunford at the USMC. And whereas Sergeant Major Bataglia is a Gulf War and Iraq War veteran, serving in combat and receiving two Bronze Star Medals with one for valor, he also received a Purple Heart Medal for being wounded in action. Among his other awards are the Defense Superior Service Medal, the Legion of Merit, their Meritorious Service Medal, the Office of the Joint Staff Identification Badge, the U.S. Army Parachutist Badge, eight awards of the USMC Expert Rifle Badge, and two awards of the Expert Pistol Badge. That was hard just to read off. And whereas before serving at this high level, Sergeant Major Bataglia served at every enlisted leadership level in the Marine Corps, from fire team leader to sergeant major of a Marine Corps division. In March of 1993, he attended the Royal Marines Commando Course, graduating third in his class and earning the coveted Green Beret. And whereas he continues to be an inspiration to all of us through his demonstration of courage, leadership, and commitment in service to our community, country, and nation. And now therefore, let it be resolved, the Mobile County Commission proudly joins the Mobile Bay Area Veterans Commission in saluting Sergeant Major Brian B. Bataglia for being recognized as the Mobile Bay Area Patriot of the Year for 2024. We acknowledge your contributions, dedication, and commitment to the cause of our freedom. Thank you for your service, Major, Sergeant Major Brian B. Bataglia. And it's signed by all three commissioners. And we have a number of members of our veterans community joining us today. Thank you for being here.
Hi, Colonel Steve Carey, President of the Veterans Commission. And it's events like this that really stand out for me. One of the things that I want to explain to everybody is we used to be called the Veterans Day Commission. It was started back in the 80s by a lot of senior leadership in the city and the county, both military and civilian. And over the years, we've realized that we're more than just Veterans Day. So now we're the Veterans Commission. And events like this, what it tells me is that we need to celebrate our great veterans and patriots all year long. And Veterans Day is obviously a key event where we can do that. But more importantly, it's every day of the year, not just around our holidays. So that's what we're going to focus on. Today, I have a special presentation. After you did yours to us, now it's us to you. And it's kind of neat, neat scenario here is the Veterans Administration has recognized Mobile as one of 57 cities in the nation as a regional site for Veterans Day. That's no easy feat. With that Veterans Day, we put on the largest Gulf Coast parade amongst a lot of other really neat activities. And I'll share with you, we have the luncheon where we honor our veteran and patriot of the year. But at four o'clock every, every Veterans Day, we also recognize the fourth graders on both sides of the bay who've written essays about what Veterans Day means to them. And if you want to really smile and get a tear rolling out of your eye, come to that event because it's just great seeing these fourth graders read their essays. But it's those kind of things in our community that, that remind everybody about what our veterans do, sacrificing throughout the course of the year. So in honor of your support to us, I want to pass this recognition on. It says, Veterans Day National Committee hereby designates Mobile, Alabama, Mobile County as a regional site for the observance of Veterans Day. So thank you for all you do for the veterans.
All right, while we're still up here, we'll go ahead and recognize the retirees from Mobile County. This morning, we have Timothy Jenkins, who was a computer systems manager for the revenue office, who is not able to be with us this morning because of illness. And we have Michelle Clinton, who is a community resource officer for the Mobile County Sheriff's Office, serving 21 years. If you want to come down, Michelle, we have a, come up here with us, we have a certificate for you. Good morning. How are you? Thank you for being here. We have this for you this morning. It says, Michelle Clinton, and we wish to express our sincere thanks and gratitude for your 21 years of dedication of service to the citizens of Mobile County, and we wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. And thank you for your service and thank you for being here this morning. I'm going to go ahead and just give everybody a little information since we just did our Operation Green Light. Of course, it's been explained what it's for, but you can show your support by shining a green light at your home or business. Free green light bulbs will be available to the public. You can pick those up at the information desk here at Government Plaza, your local libraries, and the offices of the license and the Revenue Commissioner's Office. And we ask that everyone try to do that. I know that I do every year. And those light bulbs, I think there's a limit of two per, per household. And again, you can pick those up here, your libraries, the Revenue Commissioner's Offices, or the License Commissioner's Offices. All right. I think we're ready for Cherie. Do we have any speakers this morning?
Yes, sir. We have a speaker this morning, Dr. Cindy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me back up one more time. We have a couple of special guests this morning from Mr. Gurley's Government Class at Faith Academy that I wanted to recognize. We have John O'Neill. They're right here. You guys stand up. We have John O'Neill, Mary Lynn Folds, Izzy Pierce, and Lauren Phillips. Thank you, guys, for joining us. It's always a pleasure when we have Mr. Gurley's Government students here. So thank you, guys. All right, now, Cherie, we're ready for you.
Thank you, sir. So we have one other speaker signed up to present today, and that's Dr. Cindy Gibson with Alta Point. She also has an award presentation for you. So would you like her to speak from here, or would you like her to go up here?
Either way, if she wants to come up front and do it, then we can do it up here and get a photograph. And this is Rhonda Gutling, the sister, by the way.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Gibson. Most of you know me from Alta Point. But today I'm here as the Vice President of NAMI Alabama, National Alliance on Mental Illness, to present some awards. So the award is called Friend of the Court. Connie Hudson and Merceria Ludgood are two of the county commissioners in Mobile. They make a great duo in advocating for mental health care and should be recognized together. Commissioner Connie Hudson has been an active member of Mobile County for more than 25 years with extensive volunteer and public service experience. She has been pushing for the development and implementation of a mental health court in Mobile for years. That court officially started in April of this year and is a huge undertaking. Commissioner Hudson's work to bring mental health court to Mobile focuses, focuses on shortening the length of stay in jail for individuals living with a mental illness who could get arrested as a result of that illness. Commissioner Merceria Ludgood is an attorney, civic leader, and District One Mobile County Commissioner. Commissioner Ludgood's life and work experiences are a testament to her personal motto, motto, to whom much is given, much is required. Commissioner Ludgood presented the stepping up proclamation to Mobile in 2016. And since the start of that program, she has been the champion of Mobile stepping up initiative. That initiative focuses on reducing arrests, reducing the length of stay in jail for individuals with mental illness, and connecting them to treatment and reducing recidivism. She has supported efforts to divert individuals with, in a mental health crisis from jail by getting them the treatment they need. Both of these ladies together have been a dynamic duo, tirelessly working to improve the access to treatment and divert individuals from incarceration. These two ladies work together every day, making the community a better place. They have supported sequential intercept mapping to identify gaps in services and resource, resources where criminal justice and mental health care intersect. They have supported pre-arrest diversion efforts such as co-response with an officer and a clinician, and crisis intervention team training for law enforcement, which has reduced the number of negative outcomes on these types of 911 calls. They have supported stepping up in mental health court as post-arrest diversions, helping individuals reduce those lengths of stays in jail and receive the treatment they need. They work tirelessly for the community, sometimes with little recognition, and they definitely deserve to be honored as the mental health champions they are.
And no more speakers have signed up this morning. No more speakers have signed up.
Mr. Curry? Good morning, Commissioners. Item one, approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Two, hold public hearings so any citizen of the county shall be given an opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance report.
This public hearing is now in session. Are there any comments for or against? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed.
Three, authorize advertising for bids for STEM Senior Center Walking Trail Phase Two.
So moved. Second?
Four, approve annual renewal agreement with statement of work with Civic Plus to provide digital agenda management in the amount of $18,031.17 for the county commission.
So moved. Second?
Five, approve service order agreement with Unity Fiber to increase megabits per second internet from 50 to 100 for the remaining of the existing term of approximately 30 months for the amount of $835 per month.
So moved. Second?
Six, approve appointments to serve on the Board of Directors of the Kushla Water District for four years. Terms will expire October 29th, 2028 as follows for Richard L. Nelson and Daryl T. Taylor.
So moved. Second?
Seven, approve alcohol license application of JJKJ to transfer lounge retail liquor Class One license from JLDK for the Rolling Tide on Airport Boulevard.
So moved. Second?
Eight, approve amending annual appropriation contract with the Center for the Living Arts Doing Business as Alabama Contemporary Arts Center to increase the contract amount from 100,000 to 133,360. The additional funds in the amount of 33,360 will be paid from District One Commission funds for the Historic Avenue Cultural Center Anniversary Block Party.
So moved. Second?
Nine, approve sponsorship agreement with the New Lions Park Tennis Association in the amount of 3,500 from District One Education Funds for its Turkey Day Tennis Classic Tournament fundraising event.
So moved. Second?
Ten, approve sponsorship agreement with the C. F. Pritchard with the C. F. Pritchard in the amount of $1,000 from District One Education Funds for the Pritchard Fire Rescue Department Christmas Fire Angel Toy Drive.
So moved. Second?
Eleven, approve appropriation contract with the Mobile International Festival in the amount of $5,000 from District One Education Funds to assist Chastain Fournier Middle School and Mobile County Training School to attend the Mobile International Festival.
So moved. Second?
Twelve, approve appropriation contract with the Murphy High School Alumni Boosters in the amount of $4,919 from District One Education Funds for operational expenses for Mo- Murphy High School tennis program.
So moved. Second?
Thirteen, approve professional services contract with Impact Public Affairs Consulting in the amount of $13,608 from District One Education Funds to facilitate and administer the Mobile County Community Remembrance Project.
So moved. Second?
Fourteen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Child Advocacy Center in the total amount of $2,500 for its Serve It Up With Love Tennis Tournament fundraising events.
So moved. Second?
Fifteen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Center for the Living Arts Doing Business as Alabama Contemporary Arts Center in the total amount of $1,000 for its Wild Things Ball fundraising event. Funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Sixteen, rescind action of the Mobile County Commission in the December 11th, 2023 minutes, Agenda Item Number 31, relating to approval of the project development agreement by and among Mobile County, Industrial Park Board of Mobile County, and Scannell Properties for roadway improvements.
So moved. Second?
Seventeen, approve project agreement among Mobile County, City of Mobile, Industrial Park Board of Mobile County, and Scannell Properties, whereby the county and the city will each contribute up to $2 million for roadway improvements for the industrial commercial park and warehouse distribution center located at the southwest corner of Todd Acres Road and Kuaman Road in Mobile County, and to authorize the Commission President to sign all necessary documents associated with the project. The 772 Notice was advertised in the land yap on Wednesday, October 16th.
So moved. Second?
Eighteen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Dolphin Island Sea Lab Foundation in the total amount of $2,500 for its Marine Environmental Awards Luncheon with funds divided as follows.
So moved. Second?
Nineteen, approve additional cost in the amount of $23,448 for the Art GS Monitor and Sandbox Environment Added Services with Rock Technologies to the agreement approved in the July 20th, 2023 minutes, Agenda Item Number 42. The new total amount will be $114,000.
So moved. Second?
Twenty, approve master services agreement with the Pictometry International Doing Business as Eagleview for the annual flyover projects for 2025 and 2026 aerial photography flights of Mobile County in the total amount of $885,441.
So moved. Second? That's 541?
Twenty-one, approve appropriation contract with McKinney Place in the amount of $25,000 from District One Commission Funds for operational expenses.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-two, approve amending October 15th, 2024 minutes to correct the funding sources as follows. Item, Agenda Item Number 52, Change Order Number One with Mid-America Golf and Landscaping for Mobile County Golf Course Project Golf Course Phase, and Agenda Item Number 53, Change Order Number Two with Ben Radcliffe Contract for Mobile County Golf Course Project Facilities Phase, both to be paid from CIP 2024-003A.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-three, consider taking the following action on bids.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-four, approve purchase for, of furnishings for Africa Town Historic Structure Renovation Scott Building, Africa Town Hall in the amount of $72,592.22.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-five, approve renewal of software support agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute for premium domestic annual subscription in the amount of $21,400 for the Revenue Commission.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-six, approve renewal agreement with Logical Computer Solutions in the amount of $2,123.33 for Sonic Wall for one year for the Community Corrections Department.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-seven, approve renewal of the subscription agreement with CDWG in the amount of $13,595.95 for Microsoft Office 365 for 12-month licenses for the License Commission.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-eight, approve amending Mobile County Commission, February 26th, 2024 minutes, Agenda Item Number 41, to correct subscription renewal amount of $1,099.50 for five units to read as follows. Approve, approve annual renewal subscription with Zoom Video Communications in the amount of $2,198.90 for 10 units for Zoom One Business.
So moved. Second?
Twenty-nine, approve amendment to the professional services agreement between Mobile County Commission and Airwind, approved in the August 14th, 2023 minutes, Agenda Item Number 38, to cover the production cost of a public service announcement regarding the 2024 general election, which will increase the total amount of the agreement by $2,000. The new agreement will be in the total amount of $17,000.
So moved. Second?
Thirty, uh, the hearing was held at conference. Thirty-one, authorize adoption and submission of the CEDBGDR Hurricane Sally and Zeta Local Recovery Plan to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs, and authorize the Commission President to execute all associated documents.
So moved. Second?
Did we want to hear from Gordon on these two Agenda Items? Or are you satisfied? I know there was some, we were going to get him to do some ex- explaining on Thursday, but, um, we just wait, we're going to wait till you were here for that. Unless y'all...
Who is me? I don't know if he's talking to y'all.
Yeah, we're, we're okay.
You're good? Okay. I just knew there was some questions Friday, or Thursday.
Thank you.
All right, again, Gordon, thank you for being here.
Thirty-two, preliminary and final plat of Windmill Palm Estates.
So moved. And?
Oh, and. We got an and.
There is an and, sorry about that. And preliminary and final plat of S. Fellers addition to Dolphin Island Parkway.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-three, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the following public street, West Coy Smith Highway, bounded by territories annexed by the City of Citronelle pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-four, authorize advertising and receiving bids for safety improvements on Bellengrave Road Phase Two.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-five, approve assenting to the County Engineers' Approval of an extension to, of the approval for the following preliminary plat for one year from the previous date of approval for Webster Crossing.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-six, award bid to Southern Land Development for South Access Improvements at New South Lumber Company for their low bid in the amount of $1,240,098.2.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-seven, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track One on South Crystal Springs Road in the amount of $1,500 for City of Pritchard Street's culvert replacement.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-eight, approve purchase of poles and lighting for Mobile County Soccer Complex Phase Two, four permanent fields and parking area from Musco Sports Lighting in the amount of $644,682.
So moved. Second?
Thirty-nine, approve adding Reynolds Road to the private road inventory and authorize the Public Works Department to install road signage for Reynolds Road and Brisbane Avenue as shown on the 1960 plat of Riverdale subdivision.
So moved. Second?
Forty, approve setting speed limits for roads, segments of roads, and subdivisions requested by the Engineering Department as follows.
So moved. Second?
Forty-one, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from property owners for projects as follows.
So moved. Second?
Forty-two, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track 21 on Ziegler Boulevard in the amount of $50,000 for Ziegler Boulevard additional lanes.
So moved. Second?
Forty-three, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreements in the total amount of $3,020 for St. Michael Street and Reva Road Gray Drain Basin pave as follows.
So moved. Second?
Forty-four, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the public streets as follows, and bounded by territories annexed by the City of Saraland pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved. Second?
Five, adopt resolution consenting to the annexation of portions of the public streets as follows, and bounded by territories annexed to the City of Sims pursuant to city ordinances.
So moved. Second?
Forty-six, Commission announcements and/or comments.
Commissioner Ludgood?
I do. Uh, I wanted to say what a wonderful afternoon we had yesterday at Escatapa Hollow Park and Campground. We had the opening of the new playground, which is phenomenal. You really have to see it to believe it. Commissioner, uh, Dewitt and his young daughters joined us as, and we had a, they had a great time, according to him. They, it's, uh, that was, that playground was really spectacular.
Tina, Matthew, I'll be in touch with you guys.
Yeah. I have a feeling we'll see, we may see that one again somewhere.
That is awesome.
But, uh, anyway, I am so grateful for, uh, all the help and support and the work to get that done. You know, this is just, this is part of, uh, the next phase we're working on, and there's so much more to do. But, uh, we had probably, uh, I think Cherie said about 300 people there yesterday. We had a costume contest that we had 60 children participate in. So, as you can imagine how difficult it was to judge that. But we had three of our park rangers there. And, uh, so we had, uh, in our, you know, of course, environmental services, uh, they have been key to all of this. They've helped, uh, pull everything together. And, uh, and will continue forward, uh, moving forward. We also opened, uh, the newest walking trail, which is very, very nice. And we have a lot more to go with that because, you know, we've increased the size of that park from 45 acres to about 230 acres. So there, I think we will soon be working on the next phase, which will be, uh, adding some more cabins, some, uh, and maybe even some treehouse cabins. So that's, so a lot of exciting stuff going on. But, uh, anyway, I just wanted to, to thank everybody who came and, uh, and helped make that so successful. And I think, uh, you know, the weekends are, are packed. And I think this is even going to add to it and, and make it more, um, enjoyable for everybody to, to go and visit Escatapa Hollow.
If you haven't had an opportunity, I had not. Um, I guess since way early in construction, I had went out and just a site visit. But, um, the playground is phenomenal. Uh, I, I had to go and feel the playground equipment to see if it was synthetic or real wood. And it's real wood, and it's awesome. Um, I drove through the campground, uh, sites. Uh, awesome over there as well. So, uh, fantastic job, and congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you for being there.
I'm gonna just have one announcement. The Dolphin Island Sea Lab, uh, Foundation is hosting its 12th Annual Marine Environmental Awards Luncheon, Luncheon Wednesday, October 30th at 11:00 AM at the Battle House Hotel. Um, there will be a, I just wanted to read this part real quick. There's a special presentation. An award will be given to, uh, Commissioner Blankenship from the Alabama Department of Natural, of Conservation Natural Resources. And it's a new award that's called the Sessions Brown Award. Um, and it was named after, uh, in honor of, uh, State Senator David Sessions and Representative Chip Brown in recognition for their advocacy of, uh, for conserving land and waters in the Mobile-Tensol Delta and the Alabama watershed. So, um, didn't want to announce that because, um, Chris is certainly a champion, uh, for, um, Mobile County, for the entire state, but particularly Mobile County and, and our favor. Um, he always does a fantastic job of doing things. So I, I can't think of anybody more deserving of an award, um, who has put more effort, uh, into preserving our waterways here in Mobile County. Um, so that, that's part of their, uh, awards banquet tomorrow, and that is, again, at the Battle House. And it is tomorrow, I believe, or Wednesday, I'm sorry. Um, for more information, you can go to, uh, sea labfoundation.org and look at that. So, thank you. That's it. I know that we have, uh, I know Eddie's fixing to make a, a request for a motion to adjourn. We do have an Indigent Care Board meeting, and I think I'm going to let him or Jay try to explain the steps of all the, I think we also today have a special call meeting of the Mobile County Commission, and I think we're also having an executive session. So I'll let y'all go through the steps of all of that and how we're going to proceed.
This is how I would suggest that you can recess your commission meeting now to conduct the Indigent Care Board meeting. And you'll come out of recess, go into executive session for 15 or 20 minutes. I'll certify, and I do have my card, Commissioner.
He does. He actually, he actually showed me his card finally, Mercyia. Are you, he's actually got a card, Alabama Bar Association.
They don't give cards.
Yeah, they do. John showed, John showed me his first. John showed, John showed me his first.
I had a copyright, John Adams' card.
I made Jay go to Montgomery and get a copy of his.
But we will, we will recess this now, do the Indigent Care Board meeting, come out of recess, go into executive session. You can adjourn from the executive session, because there'll be nothing needed to vote on, all before the next special meeting at 11:15, which you'd have to, should recall or call that meeting to order, whatever form you wish to.
What's the sequence again?
Executive session. The sequence, the way I look at it, Commissioner, is we would recess this meeting, go into conduct your Indigent Care Board meeting, come out of recess, go into executive session, adjourn from there, and then the new meeting at 11:15.
And we'll just call that special meeting to order when we get there. Okay, Eddie, you got all that? Make, go ahead, and we'll approve it. Go ahead.
Executive session in the executive conference room? Where, okay. And then the second meeting will be?
In the conference chambers.
In the conference chambers.
The other thing is, you can just recess the meeting now to go into executive session, then adjourn, then conduct your meeting with Indigent Care Board, either way.
Uh-oh, he's muddied the water here.
So may I, what, I mean, I see the look on Commissioner Ludgood's perplexed face.
Don't you just tell us what's next, and we'll do it.
My suggestion is just recess this meeting. I'll certify it's appropriate to go into executive session after Indigent Care Board meeting. You can recess from there. So if that's okay with the commission, I would certify that after the Indigent Care Board meeting, we go into executive session, talk about the threat of potential threatened litigation. I would certify it's an appropriate reason to go into executive session of the Alabama Open Meetings Act and as lawyer, properly licensed practice laws in Alabama. The executive session is expected, at least from Mr. Kerr and my perspective, no more than 15 minutes.
There's your card. Thank you for getting that.
There'll be a roll call vote to recess and the executive session, adjourn from there.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all.
All right, so we will stand in recess, and we will call to order the Indigent Care Board meeting.
Item one, approve minutes of the meeting of September 23.
So moved. Second?
Two, accept report from Mobile County Commission of the balance of the Indigent Care Fund at September 30. Funds available $199,289.71.
So moved. Second?
Three, approve disbursement of Indigent Care Fund cash receipts on October 9 for the periods of July 24 through September 2024 to the following entities in the following amounts.
So moved. Second?
Item four, approve request for motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All right, we stand adjourned until 11:30 for special session.